On June 9?
9.
Yeah, 2020. The Marlboro Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. This is a recorded meeting, so anyone that doesn't want to be heard, don't speak. But the meeting will be recorded legally. And this is a continuation of the meeting for 30 Maple Street. It's being held virtually through the Microsoft Teams system. 30 Maple Street was originally open for public hearing on December 10, 2019. Due to the COVID-19, the applicant and the board had requested a few extensions of time, and they were agreed upon and granted by the board. The board will now call the attendance of the members present. Ralph Lofton.
Here.
Thomas Pope.
Tom Pope here.
Robert Levine.
Robert Levine's here.
Okay. Thomas Golden.
Tom Golden here.
Paul Junta, the chairman, I'm here. Just to get a brief review of what had happened at previous meetings. After the December 10 meeting in 2019, we met with no testimony taken and continued it to January 7, 2020, in order to correctly notify the abuders. Following are some of the continuation dates. We continued the January 7 date to February 26, in order to get a definitive plan. We continued another deadline to March 24. The definitive plan was not ready yet. It was next continued to April 28. Again, we did not meet because of the COVID-19 problems. And now it's continued to tonight, June 20, 2020. All the members were present at the December 10 meeting, and they're all present this evening. Present at that original meeting in January were the Building Commissioner Jeff Cook and Pam Wilderman, the code enforcement officer. The notice of the hearing was given at that time by a certificate of mailing to all persons to be affected, as shown on the most recent tax list, and by publication in the Main Street Journal, a newspaper of general circulation, and Marlboro Mass. The documents that were submitted in this appeal, the application for variance, are an appeal hearing, and the applicant's responses to questions, which are on page 2. The plans that were presented were a sketch plan showing parking scheme 1. It was a preliminary plan dated August 1, 2019, prepared by Savello and Associates. Another plan was the parking sketch plan, parking scheme 2. Again, a preliminary-only plan dated August 1, prepared by Savello and Associates. An existing conditions plan dated August 29, 2017. A denial letter was from the Building Commissioner dated September 24, 2019. The problem that they had about the topography, the lot is narrow at the front and extends to the rear to form a rectangular-shaped lot. Attorney Jack gave a brief history of the past owners of the lot in question. Do the members of the board have copies of this as part of their draft?
Yeah, it's only a draft, yeah.
Do they have it?
Yes, they have it. Let's, we can move forward, okay? And ask Attorney Jack his.
Is he, if he's here?
Yeah, Attorney Jack is right here.
Okay, Attorney Jack, is he in attendance here?
I am.
Okay, would you want to make some comments or additional explanations of partly why we're here and the plan that was revised under February 26, I believe?
Sure. You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you have the, I think everyone has the February 26, 2020 plan in front of them. And when I was putting together the written narrative that Susan asked for, it made me realize that, and you did a great job of summarizing the procedural history thus far, and we were asked to provide one single definitive plan of what we wanted to have approved, which I had thought we had done, but in preparing that narrative, I realized that I focused so much on the parking spaces and the sidewalk and some other areas, that although the dimensional requirements that are shown on the bottom left of the plan, Zone District Residency, those are correct for a single building on a lot, I realized that Surveyor did not connect the two buildings as we had asked him to. And so I'm happy to go through the plan, but I know you guys are particular about having a final definitive plan to discuss and approve. So, you want to run through this variation, I am going to need to provide that one change, where you see both Unit B and Unit C, there's going to be, that is going to be no longer, it's like a three-and-a-half-foot gap, that will be closed and connected to form one Jeff Cook, yesterday, he sort of suggested that we extend to the next meeting so that I could give you truly a definitive plan.
So you presented this option to the Building Commissioner, Jeff Cook?
Correct. He and I discussed it yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. Do you know what his interpretation was, or his recommendation?
No, he agreed that it would make a lot of sense to combine them. If you go through his denial letter, I'd say 60% of the issues are because technically, although they're three-and-a-half feet apart, they're two buildings. And so making them what they really should be as one larger building takes care of, like I said, approximately 60% of the reasons for denial.
Okay. And reviewing the plan, the original plan, and parking schemes 1 and 2, and then this revised plan that was dated February 26, 2020, it appears that the lot coverage still exceeds the required amount.
That's correct.
30% is required, and you either have a 37%, which is the existing lot coverage, and the proposed lot coverage is 48%. That seems pretty extensive.
That's right. And so, based on the last meeting we had, we couldn't, we sort of discussed that he couldn't do both the parking and the lot coverage. And so our instructions, which I thought from you, was to present the plan that we were going to, you know, we thought made the most sense. And so, the trade-off was, the parking now meets the requirements. These are all two units, two-bedroom units, so requiring three spaces each, so there are 12 spaces. We meet parking. You're absolutely correct. The lot coverage has increased. Now that, it's mitigation, that is to use permeable pavers, but technically it will still be 48%.
And the bigger issue, I believe, relates to the letter from Pam Wilderman and her assertion that the permit on this property is basically just for a two-family unit. And upon investigation by, I guess, her and other members of the building department, they realized that there were approximately five units being utilized. And subsequent discussion, I guess, shows that the two-story garage that is in the far corner of the lot is going to be removed, will be erased, in this plan dated February And that was eliminated, and I guess, two potential units that were in that garage building. But it looks like you decided to increase the units in the second building to make it two different units there now. And although it looks like you're changing from five units in the development to four, it still doesn't alter the fact that it's only legally permitted for two-unit buildings.
That's right. And this is a two-step process. We're going to go in front of, before the city council, to ask for, to change to a special permit for a four-unit. However, to do that first, we need the variances, these variances from your board before we can move forward with that.
So that's your intention, is to go to the city council and ask for a special permit for four units?
Correct.
Okay, so this board would have to consider the fact that you don't have the proper lot coverage, and I'm not sure about your parking spaces. I have a question about parking in this plan. You show the patios, extensive patios beyond that second building towards the end of the lot.
Yeah.
And you've got, eight parking spaces along the back property line, and you have stairs behind that second building that would become an impediment for somebody on parking space nine or 10 from backing out to turn around and leave the back lot.
I'll get clarification on the stairs. I think I noted in my narrative, that patio is being removed. I didn't ask about the stairs, so I can get clarification about that.
Well, I can see the patio being removed because you've got the driveway going through to access all those parking spaces. But what about the patio to the north, if you wanted to use the top of the sheet as the north? You've got a big patio area there.
That, some of that is staying.
It's what?
I believe some is staying. I was only told that the patio at the end of the driveway is being removed.
Right. The stairs stay, and then the other patio beyond there is still staying, right?
Some of it. I think it's going to get more narrow, though, to accommodate backing out from those parking
What about the final resolution of the stairs there? It looks like you're about.
I'm going to have to get back to the board on that. I'm not clear. They may be just taking everything off the back of the building. I'll have to get clarification. And since I have to get the revision in the middle of the buildings anyway, I'll make sure that that's perfectly clear, what's staying, what's going.
And what, one final question, let me see if the board members have any questions. Do you have an explanation of what your reason for variance, for hardship, will lead? What's your hardship?
Well, so, I mean, we applied because of the shape of the lot. Size, shape, or topography, and, I mean, yeah, so it's a combination of the shape of the lot and then the topography at front.
Okay, I think I answered a few enough questions. I'm going to turn this to the board members now. If they have any questions, please state your name, board members, and identify yourselves whenever you want to speak.
And unmute and tell them to unmute themselves. Board members, if you have any questions, please unmute yourself and ask your questions.
I have a question.
Who is this?
It's Bob Levine.
Okay.
Yeah, so you cited the shape of the lot as a hardship. I mean, we've seen a lot of lots in Marlboro that are very oddly shaped. This one's not oddly shaped at all. And so I was wondering how that's a hardship. And the second comment is, we've given people a difficult time, we're 10% over the lot coverage for the permeable surface, and you're 60% over. So that's quite a bit, and it would be very hard to justify granting 60% off when people come to us with 10% who we make alter their plans. So how does the shape of the lot cause a hardship besides the fact that you want to have so many units?
It just requires such a long driveway, which is adding to some of that lot coverage. It's so narrow, so if you get to the depth of the width of the property, you have to travel a very long distance. If it was wider, much of that parking could be closer to the street, and we wouldn't have as much lot coverage.
So, I understand it's difficult, but that doesn't really meet the definition of hardship that we have to, you know, see in order to grant a variance. So I'm kind of skeptical, given the 60% over the surface area and acclaimed hardship based on the size, the dimensions of the lot, or the shape of the lot.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
Tom.
Tom Golden. Have all the existing building permits and code violations been squared or what?
To my understanding, yes. Again, I talked to Jeff yesterday. He didn't mention there was anything outstanding. I know he was there recently to confirm that they're all now two-family, so he's been at the property, two bedrooms, sorry. He's been at the property relatively recently.
Oh, this is Ralph Lofton. Sue and Paul, I'd like to see a letter from the building inspector confirming that all the violations have been cleared and that he signed off on it.
Okay.
That's a good point. Yeah, we will make sure that he gets notified about that. I think we can make a motion. We have a motion out.
No, ask if there are any questions, other questions from the board members.
Yeah, I mean, about that recommendation, should we have to have that as a motion?
No, no.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions of the board, from the board?
This is Ralph again. I just would like to clarify, just from my understanding, about the special permit that's being requested. This is required because the zoning is for two families, two buildings here, two families, but now we're being asked to okay a four-unit parcel, a four-unit development on a property that's a zone only for two. Is that correct?
This board is not being asked to approve the four units. I have to go to the city council for that, but, and we tried to do that first. They said we were doing it in reverse. We had to come to you first, get any necessary variances, and once that was done, then they would entertain the special permit for the four units.
Does that amount to rezoning that property?
You know what? It's in the bylaws. I honestly haven't looked at it in over a year, and, so I'd have to pull it, I'd get back to you on that, but I know that special permit is part of your existing bylaws.
All right, well, we will, Ralph, your recommendation about getting the information from the building commissioner on the validity of verifying that they're all legal units, that'll be sent to Jeff Cook, and we'll get an answer from him before the next meeting.
I have a question, Tom Golden. Doesn't, the ZBA, aren't we granting authority on special permits now? It's not the city council?
Are you?
Didn't they turn that over to the ZBA?
No, that's pre-existing, legal, pre-existing non-conforming units. You can take your mask off.
Okay. Yeah, the single, two-family, pre-existing non-conforming units. Well, this is one category could be considered a non-conforming unit, because it's got more than what the original permit was established for this property of a two-family house, and now you're looking for four units on two different buildings. And I don't think we can put that in a category of a non-conforming thing, of a pre-existing I think the request that we're going to ask of Jeff Cook is, what happened to the legality of having just a two-family permit as opposed to now a four-family permit? So I think that's part of the question that we would be asking him, to explain how the legality has been satisfied.
Uh, this, Ralph, again. Paul, I think that's exactly what was behind my question. I would like to see, in writing, the nature of the special permit that's being requested. What exactly is the nature of that, and what would the, what would the special permit look like if it's granted?
Okay, can you give the gist of that, too? Sue was jotting down your notes on that.
So, I use, Ralph, I use, to clarify, are you asking the applicant's special permit process through city council to request over two units in a two-family zoned area?
I'm just asking for the, if a petition has been presented to the city council for a special permit, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see what's the language of the request for the special permit.
Okay, but you do understand that they have to get the variances first?
I do.
And then they go for, because I'm not sure if they even applied for, have you applied for a special permit? No, they haven't.
We tried to, but they told us we couldn't yet, it was premature.
So you haven't even formulated the request yet?
Yeah. I think preliminary to that would have to be a revised plan coming to this board to show what they're changing as far as making a connection between the front building and this back building. I've had a few other thoughts here, questions actually, I was going to pose to the attorney or petitioner. I've noticed that some of the chain-link fences and the stockade fences on the north property line are on other people's property, as is some of the chain-link fence down just to the left of the proposed stowaway retention basin. You've got three locations where you have fences that are in other people's properties.
I will have to, I'll have to verify who actually owns those fences. For instance, on the west side, but I believe the neighbors to the west side of the property own that stockade fence, so I'll have to clarify who owns all the fences.
Right. Yeah, it would be very important, because if this were to get approved by this board or any subsequent approval by the city council, an approval of a plan would end up having to get recorded at the registry of deeds. And I don't think the city wants to be put in a position of approving a plan that's showing somebody's fences on other people's property.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll make sure that either, you know, the neighbor owns the fence that's on their property line, or we move it. If we own it, we'll move it to exactly on the property line.
Okay, any other questions from the board members? If you can ask any, any abuders who are logged in here might want to have any questions. Can you give your name, please, and then your address?
Hello, so this is Mariella and Louis Velazquez. We are the neighbors behind, directly behind 30 Maple Street, so our yards abut. I submitted some questions.
Can you give your street location, please?
11 Maddox Road.
11 Maddox, okay.
I submitted some questions to Susan, so I'll ask them here. One is on proposed Unit D. Are the, is the entrance to that apartment, those stairs that are located in the plan, is that going to remain? I think that was a, that may have been an outstanding question. The one that abuts garage, parking, parking spot 9 and 10. Currently, that is the way the person that was living there was going in and out of that apartment. My question is, is that the entrance, the proposed entrance? And what is the distance between the end of those stairs and parking 9 and 10 with the turnaround?
One second, jotting down.
Did you understand your question, sir?
I, do you want me to answer?
No, you understand it.
I did, yeah, I was just jotting down some notes. So, as, I know as part of the connecting of the two buildings, there will be a new entrance, and I believe it's for C, and so I'm going to have to see if the entrance for D is also changing. I don't think it's going to be on the back any longer, but I'll verify that. And, you know, as discussed, I'm going to verify whether those stairs are staying or not.
Yeah. One of our concerns, too, is the amount of cars that's being squeezed into this small property. These cars are facing our backyard, and we're talking about eight cars directly facing, like, our fence. I'm concerned about the emissions, the amount of noise pollution that's going to come out of that area, the loitering that's going to take place, especially with a total of 12 vehicles all kind of crammed in the backyard now. They're all going to be facing my property and my backyard. I use my yard as a means of relaxation and not having headlights shined on me while I'm sitting in my patio drinking a cup of coffee. So that's definitely one of my major concerns, that the whole back area is pretty much now my yard is going to be overlooking a parking lot, pretty much. So it's going to depreciate the value of my home, as well as my neighbors, just staring at this major eyesore, pretty much.
Yeah, so that parking scheme may look like it fits 12 cars, so I would want to really look at the dimensions of cars backing in and out, enough time to turn. I could see someone stepping on the drive instead of reverse, and we're all screwed, honestly. So it takes up a lot of space on the lot. We've already established that it's, I don't see a hardship as expanding property because of a lot size. So that's my main concern, is the parking and the expansion of activity, noise, people, music.
The emissions.
If we allow a three-family, given the history of this owner, it will quickly expand when no one is looking, and this is my concern. This, we've had history with the owners with this lot.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there, Mr. Jack, is there any possibility of alleviating the problem that they're relating to you tonight?
Well, a couple of things. So in addition to the fence that's there now, my clients, you know, anticipate putting significant screening landscaping in there, and they're happy to work with the back neighbors to, you know, to discuss what that should be.
But that's just going to take up more space.
Yeah, and the landscaping is not going to reduce the amount of emissions, as well as noise pollution that's going to come from that back area.
It's very, very tight. If you put landscaping, it's just going to take up, it'd be fine, I guess, but it'll take up more space.
Well, if you look on the plan, it's already sort of sketched out where that will be, so that space is already accounted for. It's right in between the fence and the parking spaces.
Yeah, but that's not enough space.
That's not the way it looks on real life, I guess. I mean, there's one thing to look at the plan, and one thing for me to look. That's not the way it looks on real life. I guess I, I mean, there's one thing to look at the plan and one thing for me to look. Uh, I mean, anyways. That's, that's our concern. Um, we don't see a way around that. And we don't see a way around, uh, a negotiation around having eight tonight parking spots directly there. I, I just don't see a way around that. That's like a showstopper. I just, I just can't. Imagine any of you having eight parking spaces right abut in your backyard, right at your fence. That's not what you anticipated when you bought your house 20 years ago. This significantly changes the way that that house is being used.
Thank you.
I guess.
Mr. Jack, the, uh, it looks like from the scale, it's about a five-foot landscaping area from the end of the parking space to the property line.
I think it's seven feet. Believe it. But.
See that seven feet way up the top there that? Okay, and would, if you were to entertain screening there to alleviate their concerns, it would probably have to be a continual screening.
Correct.
Nice, uh, variety shelves, shrubs of trees all along the line.
Yeah, but the car emissions and the lighting, it's not going to, it's not, you can put a tree there, but it's not going to block away the emissions that these cars are going to be providing. Imagine eight, eight, eight cars parked there while they're turned on, warming up in the wintertime. You're hearing doors slamming, the emissions that these cars are producing. And those are just eight that are abutting my fence. We're talking about a total of 12 vehicles all crammed in that back area. It's just unsafe and it's unhealthy. It's, it's just not, not the right thing to do.
And, and a tree is temporary. I, I view landscaping as a temporary thing. Trees die, they are not, they don't grow. Uh, we decide not to, you know, they, they get a shorter tree. That's not a cars and a parking spot, and then allowing this is a permanent thing.
Yeah.
A tree, a tree and a bush is, is temporary.
Yeah, and given the history with, with the, given the history with the owner of this property, if the tree dies, I'm pretty sure he's not going to keep up with the maintenance on this property. Also, when he shovels the snow in the winter, he's not going to worry about pushing the snow up against my property as well as the fence and stuff. This is just not a person that's, that's easily to work with. Um, I, I, I've just had a lot of experience with him. I think, I think we're all trying to be politically correct, but this guy is just a slumlord, you know?
Are, are you talking about my client or the prior owner?
Oh, I'm talking about your client, yes.
We're just, we're just reacting to what we see on paper and what we see. Um, he doesn't live there, so he's renting it out. He's had people living there. He didn't even know they were there. And we're like, no, there's people there. So he, he can't, he doesn't know, he doesn't live there every day to see what's happening with a two-family house, let alone expanding it to double the size with double the occupancy. It's an everyday management of people and cars and noise and visitors.
Oh.
So, I mean.
People, people just, they, they go in their backyard, they, they sit on their cars, they have their drinks on their cars, music loud. I mean, and this is just with the amount of tenants that he has now.
This is their backyard, so that's what people choose to do in their yard. And now we're doubling that size. And again, he doesn't live there. With all due respect to all of you, you guys don't live there. We, we see this every day. And if there's any other neighbors we, on this call, they can probably attest to that. We're now doubling the occupancy and the activity, the cars, the noise, the visitors that are happening there.
Okay, so.
And I, I don't see the hardship. The hardship is what, trying to make more money out of the lot? I don't understand that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Are you
And I.
asking us, or are you going to be stating that you are in opposition to this particular proposal?
Are you asking us?
Oh, yes, I, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
All right. All right, the board members, anyone else on the board have any questions of the butters or the petitioner's attorney?
Yeah, I know. What do they plan to do about snow removal? There's no room back there to plow snow. There's no place to put snow.
Yeah, I was going to say often the snow, snow removal storage is a condition to, uh, you know, special permit variance. So if, if we can't find someplace so, you know, far left, what is it, southwest corner, I guess, where the old garage is a possibility. But if.
That, that's right up against my fence, yep.
I thought we put the trash dumpster there too.
Yeah.
Well, it's unhappy with that. You can obviously require that it be removed rather than stored.
Or just not have it there at all.
I can't, I can't control the snow.
Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Velasquez, you've said a couple of times, my fence. Is that your fence?
Well, actually, yes. I, actually, um, the, the owner prior to, to what, to the previous, um, owner to the area, we actually paid for it half and half, and we kind of replaced it. But just recently, I, I tried to reach out to the previous owner to, you know, uh, assist me with the payment of the fence. And he was just, he was just kind of giving me the runaround. So I just went ahead and replaced it myself because I found it as, as a hazard to my, my family having the previous tenants that were living there illegally and, um, and their lifestyle that they were using that backyard for.
Notwithstanding all that, your fence is about a foot onto his property there. Is that what I see on this?
I, I'm sorry?
It looks like your fence is about a foot onto that, that property.
It was replaced exactly where it was before.
Like, the pillars were put exactly where the pillars were removed.
But I didn't, we were wondering before who owned the fences, so.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was always there.
I was wondering if that was.
It was a fence when we bought the property 20 years ago. We replaced it now twice.
Okay, so you won't, okay. That was all.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes. Yes, this is Mr. Bisson, 19 Warren Ave.
Oh, okay. Mr. Gibson.
Bisson, B-I-S-O-N.
Bisson?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Bisson, are you logged in here on the, the virtual screen or you just calling in?
No, I'm on the. I'm on the telephone.
Okay, go ahead. What's your question or comments?
Two questions. The first question is, um, why is not the building commissioner there to address these issues to you and to the attorney? My second item was, the only people I could hear, okay, were Ralph and my neighbors on Maddox Road. No one else I could hear any of the questions or any of the answers. I think this is a poor way of trying to keep people informed on what's going on. That's, those are my questions.
Let me ask Scott. Scott, are you, Cynthia, are you there?
Cynthia, Scott?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Bisson's question about he can't hear, uh, the questions that were being, uh, asked. Is there a problem maybe with the, the phone lines or his phone or our, our phone?
There shouldn't be any problems. I've, I have been doing, um, the team chat with my phone. Um, I don't know if the wireless or the, a carrier that he has.
So is it, is it just the team, um, so is it Susan and the other two board members, and then you can hear everybody else?
I couldn't hear anyone else on the board. The only people I could hear is Ralph. I don't know who Ralph is. And I could hear my neighbors at 11 Maddox Road. That's it.
So you couldn't hear Bob Levine, you could not hear me, or Susan, or Tom Golden?
This is Bob Levine speaking. Can you not hear me?
I could hear you a little, but your voice was very low. Now you raised your voice and I can hear you now.
Okay.
I mean, they are in a, a, a large room, so the, the voices may not carry over well. And everybody else is within their own homes, so they might actually have a, you know, a closer range of the, the microphone. So we can certainly look into this moving forward to see if we can, you know, help that along. Maybe get some additional mics or what have you.
Maybe, can he put his phone on speaker or something? Maybe he can hear better if his phone is on speaker than, than his hearing, the earpiece?
No, I have it on speaker.
So maybe what if you took it off speaker and just put it up to your ear? Let's see if that is any better or?
Well, I can hear you, and then I don't know who you are.
This is Mark Gibson.
Okay, Mark. I could hear you, and I could hear Ralph, and I could hear my neighbors. And I could hear the chairman talk, but he was very, very low. He wasn't, um, you know, high pitched.
Okay, Chairman, can you please talk louder?
I think they all have to talk louder.
Okay.
But I think we're, I think we're past the point. The point is, why isn't the building committee, or not the building committee, but the, uh, building inspector and their people addressing this issue to you, the board? If they rejected them, why aren't you people either listening to them or approving the plan?
Okay, we have not heard anything from the building commissioner officially. There was a conversation between Sue, the secretary, and Jeffrey Cook, the building commissioner today, about the petitioner suggesting a revised plan to connect the back building to the front building. And that's the first we hear of the board. Did you hear me or not, Lance?
So you're meeting, the city's meeting yesterday just got to the city and you a day before the hearing. What's going on? They had to have this information a long time ago. We were promised this in December.
Right. After the December meeting and went to January, and we asked for more information, they gave us a new plan. It took a couple of more months because of the corona, coronavirus business and the postponed hearings uh, to get the revised plan. The plan was dated February 26.
The revised plan should have been to the board. They promised to give it to the board on December. From the November meeting to the December, we were looking for the information so we could do it, and nothing ever showed up.
Well, we have it. We have it now.
Oh, yeah, we got it now, and you guys are talking about it.
No.
I, I, I think, have you reviewed the plan?
Sir, the plan that we have still has some problems with it, okay?
That's good.
All right?
That's good.
And we're hearing from your butters and yourself and also some of our board members here. Trying to justify how we're going to approach this. And now we're going to be seeing if we are going to get a revised plan again from the petitioner, who's now suggesting they want to connect the two buildings. Or Mr. Ed.
How long?
Can I, can I?
How long, how long are you people going to let, keep extending to this builder? He's not helping you, and he's not helping us. He's dragging it on piecemeal. Why should we have to suffer because we have to change our plans every single month because of him not giving you the plans right upfront? Or changing the plan so he can say, oh gee, I'm going from five units down to four units? And then we, the butters and people in the area, asked for the information, and we just got the, um, uh, let's see, we got Jeffrey Cook's, um, denial, zoning denial. I got it two days ago. Why did I get it two days ago? Why couldn't we have this upfront? So we knew what was going on. I guess we're getting frustrated.
Yeah.
Sir, what is the, the date of the letter you got from Jeffrey Cook? Was it dated?
September 24, 2019.
That's the original one we got, okay?
Can I, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the applicant is going to revise his plan to connect the two buildings. So at that point, when the plan does get to Jeff Cook, he has to review it, and then he's going to make comments on that. Uh, this, this revised plan, that's dated February, February what?
Yeah, 26.
Twenty, the revised plan that's dated February 26 was not reviewed by Jeff Cook because he, he found out yesterday that there was going to be another revised plan of connecting the two buildings together. So that is, that's a different review now.
Yeah, so, uh, this is Spence Papke and Sharon Papke. We live at 14 Maddox Road.
14 Maddox?
14 Maddox, yep, across the street from Louie and Linda Velasquez at 11 Maddox. So I guess, I guess my question is, um, you know, every, every time we come to one of these meetings, there's a change in plans. And so is this the standard process? Because how many change in plans are you going to allow? The reality is, is that the zoning for this does not allow more than, than two-family. And so now they're moving to four-family, and we all understand that the parking lot is a huge issue and is a 60% variance. I just feel like you're trying to squeeze, you're trying to squeeze more people in, you're trying to squeeze more parking into a space that certainly is not adept to be able to handle it. You know, I mean, are we just going to keep waiting, waiting, waiting? You know, at some point, I think people need to, need to make a decision. Is this going to happen or is it not going to happen? And I think they're waiting on the variances, whether they're going to continue to be denied. I, I understand they have the right to appeal, but how many appeals are we going to allow?
And I, I just want to, sorry, this is Sharon, uh, here with Spence, and I just want to add, so if we're all acknowledging, or at least a lot of us have concerns about the parking situation.
Sharon, where do you live, Sharon?
I, I live with Spence. Spence.
Okay, all right.
Maddox Road, I'm sorry. So I guess I keep hearing about how the plan is going to be changed and the buildings are going to be connected, but that is nothing that's not going to change the parking. The parking, I think we've already established, is a huge problem. So whether they come back with another plan that has some, some architectural changes to it, this, this parking situation is still a problem. And the fact that they're coming, not knowing where steps are, not knowing where things are laid out, that feels to me very unprepared and.
After the third or fourth time.
Yeah, um, and it feels to me like they're kind of making it up as they go along now. And, um, yeah, I, you know, my husband and I just kind of feel at a certain point, this is not what it was ever intended to be used for. We can see a ton of problems with it. We already have an apartment building at the corner of Maddox Road and, um, Warren Avenue that has a very strange parking situation, looks terrible, lots of people loitering, all kinds of activity there. And the last thing we need is another situation like that right on the other side of our houses. So there's a lot of concern. We, we bought our houses to be in a residential neighborhood around these homes, and now, you know, we're looking to squeeze something in that doesn't really fit.
We don't think they should be rezoned to, to apartment buildings, because that's not, that's not what they're originally zoned for or intended to be.
Okay, I think we've heard from the butters and get their gist of what their objections are. Uh, a lot of it that this board is going to have to consider is whether or not the interpretation by the building commissioner as to whether it be a legal compliance with the zoning requirements or not. If there's still a problem with that, and, and he recommends something different to us, or does not agree with the revised plan of attaching the two buildings, this board would have not too much other opportunity except to consider some of the reasons for denial. And we might want to consider the fact that there were originally was just a two-family. Uh, and we might want to consider the fact that there were originally was just a two-family permit allowed for this property and now there is a revised plan considering four families, four apartments. Uh, if they, even one of those apartments were to be reduced and you only have three apartments, that would have an effect on the lot coverage and the number of parking spaces. That would give them a little flexibility. If the board were to deny all the variances and and reflect on the fact that it should only be a two-family, uh, property, that should alleviate a lot of the problems with parking and lot coverage in particular. If if we deny those variances, I don't know if the city council can still consider a special permit. And, uh, I'll have to defer to our law department or maybe the city council president if he's able to speak here. Mike, are you connected? If if this board denies the variances, how would the city council handle a special permit
Um, probably not favorably. Um, the ZBA would have to approve it, but I, again, I'm listening for the first time on this project, so I have to do a little bit of homework, uh, to, uh, make sure I say the right things, uh, Mr. Chair, so, um, I would recommend that you, the ZBA, continue to do their diligence, get the plans that the applicant wants to submit, you've heard from the butters, they've got some very, uh, sound objections and then weigh the case on its merits. You know, I think, uh, remember Levine characterized it correctly with the sixty percent lot coverage, that's usually outside, um, what's normally granted, but again, I'd let the ZBA weigh it on its merits.
All right, thanks very much for your comments, sir. Okay, uh, board members have any last, uh, recommendations or questions or motions?
Paul, sorry, Bob.
Yeah, so we've heard a lot of different issues, the number of apartments, variances, all these different things, but to me, I think it comes down to three things. Um, I've seen no basis for hardship here, let alone a substantial hardship. Um, we've given people denials who have been greater than ten percent over lot coverage, and this one's asking for sixty percent. Now, if it were to get that down to thirty percent, there's no way you could put the parking in for all these units. And lastly, I agree with the neighbors, the aesthetics of the neighborhood, I think the Velasquez's did a great job of describing what life would be on their side. So I've really never seen a case more worthy of a denial that's come before us than this one. So, you know, like I said, given all the other things and, you know, I I don't really need to see another drawing that shows these buildings connected, because the sixty percent coverage, oh, the sixty percent over the allowed coverage is just a total, uh, deal breaker for me in thinking about this. So that's what I think.
Well, this is Ralph, I, Bob has made my speech for me, um, I was going to ask the question of what else are we going to learn from a revised plan when we're confronted with this, uh, lot coverage issue, and that's the basis for the request for the variance? And I cannot see my way clear to approve that based on the, on what we know and what we've heard. I see no basis for a hardship, especially a substantial hardship. So, uh, based on what we know now, I'm not sure that it makes any sense to even consider any additional information. I wonder if we're not ready to take a vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Ralph. Anyone else on the board which is speak?
Yeah, I agree with the, uh, I have a tendency to agree with the, uh, the butters, I mean, how many more revised plans do we need? I mean, this is gonna be the third or fourth one coming up, I mean, it's, and the lot coverage is the issue. So, uh, you know, I have a tendency to agree with the rest of the board members.
Uh, this is Tom Pope, I concur with everyone that, uh, the issue is a lot coverage, sixty percent is way too much percentage increase, uh, I would not, and just, a new plan will not, it's just gonna increase the, uh, lot coverage, so, uh, I would not look favorably on it. So I don't see a, a review of revised plan would be something that, uh, we need to entertain.
Can I, can I wait for one moment? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, this is Jack, go ahead.
You know, clearly, I I'm I'm hearing where where the board is on this, and I think that's what we were, we were trying to get some some guidance at the at the first meeting on what was most important to the board, you know, on trade-off in parking and lot coverage, and maybe they're both equally important and and that's, that's a fine answer. Uh, but we chose the parking to be compliant, we could have, I believe, I have to check with the engineer, I believe we could have kept it to thirty-seven percent lot coverage and had what we thought was adequate parking, which was two, two, um, two spaces, I don't even have to, I forget what it was, but the, we wouldn't be complying with the parking, but we could keep our lot coverage where it is. Is, is that acceptable to the board?
Well, this is Ralph again, I, again, the, the parking is only one of the issues, the other issue is the the demonstration of a substantial hardship, and I, I can't find it, I'm just, uh, it is, it has not been shown to me that there is a substantial hardship that arises from the shape of the lot and the topography and the the characteristics of this particular parcel of land.
I don't know if the, the Google map that I I printed out, I believe it the original, if you take a look at the, at the neighborhood on Google Maps, you'll see that is a rather unique lot, uh, for its size, most of the lots are, you know, rectangular in shape, where, whereas ours, most of our lot is to the back of the lot, which is making it very difficult to utilize the lot.
It can be, it can be utilized as a two-family home.
And and I should say, and I believe, I think we mentioned during the very first meeting in the history of this lot, the prior owner illegally, but had used it as a four-unit, and I thi- and I think actually five, because he had a little, uh, you know, commercial space up front for a while, but at one point, I think this this property was five units. Um, it was not, it was illegal, we we admit that, that's why we're here, we're trying to do it legally, but it's false to say that this was always used to two, a two community property, it was not, it was up to a five unit at one point.
Right, but it didn't, it didn't work as a five unit.
So this is Sharon and Spence, so because they were breaking the law, I don't not really understand.
Stand by yourself, please.
Who's speaking?
Sorry, this is Sharon Papke, fourteen Maddox Road, I guess I'm not really sure where we're going with this argument, now we're being told that the previous owner was breaking the law by renting to multiple families and using it as a commercial space, so because they were breaking the law, we should allow them to continue to do so? Is that the argument that you're making?
The chair, control the meeting, address the questions to the chair.
What is your question, ma'am?
What is his argument?
We just heard the attorney for the client who wants to expand the property tell us that it's been used illegally in the past, and I'm not really sure what he's, what argument he's trying to make, is he trying to tell us that because they broke the law in the past, we should allow them to continue to do so?
I mean, that, that shouldn't even be taken into consideration.
Uh, Ralph?
Go on.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the woman that was just speaking, um, the past usage of it doesn't, doesn't matter a bit to me, so, um, don't worry about that. But I think, uh, this is, Mrs. Velasquez, is that right? Yeah, you hit the nail on the head, uh, yeah, there's a big hardship to put five units or four units on this property, but that doesn't make it a hardship in the sense that the zoning board of appeals, uh, considers. Um, it's not a hardship for one or two maybe, but, uh, that, that, that doesn't cut it as a hardship at all, saying, oh, I can't put four units on because it's a small property. So that just doesn't hold water.
Yeah, we agree.
I, I think we heard from all the neighbors and, uh.
See if there's anybody else out there.
Yeah, anything left?
Any other butters out there? Are there any other butters in the lobby who want to speak? I guess not, okay.
Okay, so I want to thank the butters for attending this difficult virtual meeting and offering your comments and questions, okay? We're gonna close that part of the hearing and have the board consider any decisions that they would like to comment on or recommend. First, well, let me say something to the board members. From the outset, I was very disturbed when I found out in that earlier meeting that there was a building permit for only a two-family unit there, and that they had uncovered some irregularities with construction going on without any permits to add other units, the additional building in the, behind the main one and then in the garage. And, uh, whoever did that was, you know, was against the law, and the building department rightfully uncovered the fact that they were illegally doing some work there. Now, I guess it was in receivership according to the notice I got here, and that was probably when the new owner took over the property, but that does not allow a new owner, because there were five illegal apartments there, to want to come in and create five new apartments. He since has come back with a plan, February twenty-sixth, to remove the garage and then condense, consolidate and put two units in the first building and two units in the second building for a total of four apartments. That doesn't sit well with me, not when I know that it was supposed to have been a two-family zone and that there are other problems around the city that contribute to this type of overcrowding situation. And I think we have some valid arguments from the abutting residents there and to verify their, uh, objection to this. And I think the board members have rightfully highlighted one of the more critical things, the lot coverage and the hardship factor that we have to consider. And I agree that the excessive lot coverage going up to forty-eight percent, when it's only maximum is thirty percent, that's allowed, uh, that is a little bit too much for this board, I don't think since I've been on this board, we've never given any variance for that large an increase in lot coverage. Minor increases, we would now need, give the benefit of the doubt to the petitioner. This is not a minor increase in the lot coverage. And, uh, because of those comments, I would like to entertain motions from other board members on how this board should react to this now.
This is Ralph, uh, Paul, if you were ready for a motion, I would move that we deny the variance.
Okay.
I'll second that motion, that's Tom Pope.
Okay, we've had a motion from Ralph Lofton, seconded by Tom Pope, to deny the variance. Any discussion on that motion from the board members?
Um, should we get the petitioner, the chair, to withdraw without prejudice?
Uh, I don't know at this time, I think he would have to come in with a new petition anyways, if he did. Any other comments from the board? Any discussion, if not all are in favor of denial of the petition? I guess we're gonna have to take a roll call of that, right?
Do a roll call.
Yeah. All right, Ralph Lofton, in favor of denial?
In favor of denial.
Okay. Thomas Pope?
Thomas Pope in favor of denial.
Robert Levine?
Uh, Robert Levine in favor of denial.
Thomas Golden?
Tom Golden in favor of denial.
Paul Jutta, in favor of denial. So the motion to deny the petition is approved five-zero. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion that we adjourn this virtual hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Robert Levine, seconded by Ralph Lofton, to adjourn the hearing. Any other, uh, any other comments from board members?
You need to do a roll call.
Okay, another roll call. Uh, Ralph Lofton, adjourn, a motion to adjourn.
Approve the motion to adjourn.
Thomas Pope?
Approve to adjourn.
Robert Levine?
Approve to adjourn.
Thomas Golden?
Approve to adjourn.
And Paul Jutta, adjourn. I declare this hearing, meeting adjourned.